Yes. Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have three changes to the agenda this evening. Under new business, one will be a crack ceiling estimate for 2025. And then, uh, requests from the planning commission. And then adding of an executive session for attorney-client privilege during that section of the meeting.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, now's the time. Please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and let us know why you're here.
Uh, good evening. My name's Amy Beck, and I live at 920 West Fourth. Um, yesterday, at about 1:20 in the afternoon, I was over on industrial, kind of towards the southwest corner of the proposed site for the best facility. And, you know, we've gotten a little bit of rain over the last few days. And I don't know if you'll be able to see this, but really hearing it is more... Um, this is a video that I took. This is one of the drains. I don't know if you can hear the water pouring into the drain. Um, that's after the rain that we've gotten over the last few days. And it was a significant amount of water running into that drain. Um, it just got me curious, and I started doing a little bit of research. According to the USGS website, um, two inches of rain over a 10-acre area produces about 543,000 gallons of water. We've been told that each of the containers for the, that for these batteries is the equivalent of roughly 75 Tesla batteries. Tesla car fires with one battery typically takes between 30,000 and 50,000 gallons of water to extinguish. Let's just say 40,000, split the difference. So with 75 Tesla batteries in a container, if one of those goes up in flames, it's gonna take approximately 3 million gallons of water to extinguish that fire. And that's for one container. That translates in the same area to about 11 inches of rain. Four-and-a-half size Olympic, uh, four-and-a-half Olympic-sized swimming pools. Um, another, just kind of a visual for me, the new water tanks that they built in Newton on First Street are 1.9 million gallons. So we're talking 3 million gallons of water to extinguish one of these fires. Judging by the amount of water that's running into that one drain, 3 millions of ga, 3 million gallons of water has to go somewhere. That water is polluted. It's toxic. There's chemicals in it. It's either gonna soak into the ground over the equus beds, or it's gonna go into those drains, which is gonna go into the river to other areas. 3 million gallons of toxic water is a concern. And until we can be guaranteed that there is no chance of fire, which can't be guaranteed, it's something that needs to be thought about before this project is approved. On another note, we were originally told that there's a .58% chance of failure. .58% doesn't sound like that much. 2020 census, the city of Halsted had about, the population was 2,179 people. .58% of that, 12 to 13 people in our city. Harvey County's population for the same time was 34,024. .58% of that, 197 people. The school district, about 840 students. .58% of that is five students. If you wanna look at numbers, look at how many... Look at it in that perspective. It's not just a .58% of failure. You know, these are, these are numbers that I feel need to be looked at before this project is even remotely approved. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Name and address, please.
Ron Dick, 420 Santa Fe Street, Halsted. I am still waiting on answers from the questions I presented at the last council meeting. I was just curious when I was gonna receive those.
Uh, Brad, any comments other than...
Review the responses with Ethan to make sure I've completely given everything. Um, the gentleman did provide us with those in writing, which I appreciated. It made it a little easier to go ahead and put those in order. And I've roughed out the various answers to all of that. Couple of things I still need to acquire, I think that would be good exhibits.
Okay.
Um, and then I talked with Ethan. I was gone for him out last week, otherwise I think we would be done by now, but...
Okay. Did you catch that, sir?
A date?
I'm not gonna give one tonight. I don't until I talk to Ethan. I'll try to do it as quickly as we can. Yeah, I guess that's an answer. It's correct.
Who's next?
Dr. Keating, 20 Cedar Drive. I think that the people sitting here, the number-one priority for everybody should be the safety of the community. Number one. With that said, it kind of amazes me that we're even having this discussion since so many communities have already turned these battery storage units down. We are one of the very, very, very few that said yes to even look at it, and I am in awe that with the Harvey County ban that we're moving forward. I think the question has been asked before. I'm gonna ask it again because if something happens, this is going to be the question that is gonna haunt you guys. It's gonna haunt the city. Why are we doing this when Harvey County has already banned it? What's the justification?
Can I address that real quick? Because Harvey County has not banned BES. In fact, if you look under their CREP regulations, which is renewable energy projects, can, and there is a conditional use permit that does allow BES in Harvey County. And everybody keeps saying that it's banned. It is not. It is, you can do a BES in Harvey County under a conditional use permit. Brad, you represent the county as their attorney. Is that true?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge. I, it predates me, but when we looked at it.
So it's not banned in Harvey County, and everybody keeps saying that. I've looked at the regulation myself. And under their conditional renewable energy program, and I can provide you that, Roger. I've got copies of it.
Please.
But, yeah, and you're right. Uh, safety is a major concern. And everybody has opinions. But people that have opinions may not necessarily have the credentials to back those opinions up. So I prefer to wait until we have those credentialed people look at this process. Um, I think we're up to what, seven or eight engineering studies now, if we ever get to that point, Ethan, that have to kick off before this project could happen? Those studies would be done by professional engineering firms. That's the information I want in my hand.
What, when you say engineering, what are they studying? Is, is it safety? Is, is it...
One of them's gonna be a site-specific. There'll be environmental. There'll be noise. What else is there, Ethan?
Uh, hazard mitigation, groundwater, hydrology, um, stormwater runoff and detention. Have to look up, um... Noise, uh, general community impact. Emergency operation, uh, hazard mitigation, which of itself has many subsections from cybersecurity to fire to explosion to uh, all hazardous weather.
You know, when we do research on these, I always find it interesting how difficult it is to find stuff. Uh, if the last five years have taught us anything, it's how the media, the, uh, search engines, it's hard to trust anybody. Personally, what I've found to be very helpful are firefighting blogs. Uh, I feel like they, they have information that most folks aren't able to get to, and they're very, uh, thorough in their analysis of, uh, the fires that happen with these battery storage. And one thing that I've noticed is, uh, as opposed to what Amy was saying, I, from everything that I've read, they just let them burn. That's, that's the current plan, is let it burn. The problem with that is the toxins that are spewed and just go and go and go, and these things are insane to watch them burn. I don't know if you guys watched videos, but it's, it's not like a traditional fire. They are intense and very aggressive. It creates so much toxic pollution. The acids used make hydrochloric and sulfuric acid look like fingernail polish remover. I mean, that, it is intense. And you end up with this toxic cloud that would essentially just fall upon the city. So your fence, your roof, your siding, your yard, your driveway, the roads, everything gets coated. Then the rain comes and washes that all, and that's what fills the slough. That's what fills the river. I, I can't... It's one of those things, I, I know that, uh, there's an economic benefit to this, but still, this is just not something that we should have in our town. I know you're gonna be running through all these, these proceedings, but in the meantime, people aren't buying homes here. People aren't starting businesses, and, and you've had the numbers. You, you've shown that, uh, it equates to this many businesses to cash their handiness. It equates to this many new, new houses. Well, that's what we sacrificed. And in the time that we're gonna take to go through these, that's, that's what's sacrificed. And then in the 10 years that this is around, those are still gonna be sacrifices. I just, I really wish that it would be that this would be nipped in the bud because I, I can't, I can't believe we're proceeding with this and that we're willing to take this risk and the experimentation that this is gonna be with these new systems.
This is not an experimentation. There's 944 of these that exist across the US. There's a proven track record with many of these systems. Now, of course, if you look for accidents, you're gonna find mossland, and you're gonna find surprise Arizona. Neither one of those plants were built to NFPA 855 specs. Once you start hitting those plants that are post-2020, that are built to NFPA 855 specs, you're seeing a history of reliable service out of those. Now, I'm not saying that they're completely exempt from any issues. You're always gonna have issues. But I'm not smart enough to tell you what that fire's gonna put out in a plume or what rain could do to that. That's why we have to engage these professional engineers. And that is the process for vetting any commercial industrial-type development in our community. And to be fair to the developer, we need to go through the entire process, and then we'll make an educated decision once we get through that process.
I guess I fail to see where five years really creates much of a history to base a, a safety, uh...
I don't know. If you look at the right five years in automotive manufacturing, it makes a big difference. Maybe the five years when airbags come out or anti-lock brakes. All technology tends to evolve over time. I mean...
But, but you're risking the families and the community in this.
I disagree. Give me one incident that shows a BES incident in the US cost a life. Just one incident in the US. There is none.
There's many through the world, though. That, that's the trick.
The world doesn't follow OSHA and the other regulations that we follow here in the US. And that, that is how you mitigate dangers, by regulating it, and, and that's what we're looking at doing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate you coming in, Roger. Anybody else? Seeing no movement from the gallery? Go ahead.
Are you guys from USD 440?
Yes.
They asked to come approach the governing body in public forum?
Sure.
I'm gonna give each of you one of these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I still got two.
Thank you. Hello, city council members. We are HHS FBLA, and we presented to you guys last year, but for a quick refresher for those of you guys who maybe don't remember or who are new to the council, FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. We are Halsted High School's business club, basically. Um, and we participate in a lot of events similar to FFA. Now, I know FFA is a lot more popular here in Kansas, but FBLA is very similar to FFA in the events we do. We do a lot of business sanctioned events such as public speaking. We do a lot of objective test-taking to better our skills in economics. We have tests about public speaking. There's digital media things, and all of that falls under FBLA. And this past March, Halsted's FBLA competed in the state FBLA competition. And at the state competition is where you can qualify for nationals. And we had five national qualifiers. Three of them are up here speaking to you, and the other two are taking advantage of their summer vacation. So I am Parker Matwire, and I qualified for National FBLA, which is hosted in Anaheim, California. I am a part of a group who does business ethics. And in business ethics, we are presented with an ethical dilemma, which me and my group members have to find a way to navigate and to fix. My group members are Delia Stewart and Michael Detwiler, and they cannot be present here with us, but they are here in spirit. And so I will let the rest of mine fellow national competitors speak.
Hi, I'm Leah Parks, and it's my first year in FBLA. And I made it to the national convention in intro to public speaking. And in this event, we're given a topic at the beginning of the year, and we're provided time to prepare a five-minute speech over this topic and how it applies to our personal lives and how it has taught us to be better business leaders of America. And FBLA has really brought so many different aspects into my life that I wouldn't have experienced without it. A good example is I have never been on a plane before, but with this opportunity to go to the national convention, I'm going to fly for the first time. And good thing that I have some people who have flown before, because I might be a nervous wreck without them. But without FBLA, this opportunity wouldn't be provided to me until way later in life. Um, so, yeah.
Hello, I am Ryan Yonkey, and I, and this is my first year in FBLA as well, and I qualified for FBLA Nationals in the digital animation event. Within this event, each group, or in this case, myself, as I am in a solo group, is given a prompt and is tasked with creating a digital animation related to the prompt to present during competition.
We, as an FBLA group, have already gone through many fundraising opportunities. Um, but not all of those fundraisers have gone towards our national trip. Much of the percent of the money we fundraised has gone towards our FBLA club in general. We are about $1,500 shy of our goal to get all five of us to nationals, which brings it to about $300 out-of-pocket for these students. Now, a lot of these students are involved with other, whether it be athletic or academic things in the USD 440 school system. Example, myself, I am included in debate as well as wrestling, so I personally need some extra financial help towards getting to this national trip, as it can be a little costly. So that's where you guys step in. If anything at all, or even just giving us your time helps, anything at all helps. Um, you will see on this sponsorship proposal, the amount of, mm, or excuse me, all of the fees that play into this trip and how it all adds up per student. Now, like I said before, we've already done fundraising opportunities that have helped cut this cost down. But it is still a costly trip, and we are still needing that little extra help. Um, some of the fundraising things we've already done is we've, we've done a 50/50 raffle. We've done concessions, including for the Rupp tournament and the Conrad Nightingale track meet. And we've also, just this past week, done tacos, walking tacos at the Summer Bash hosted at the Learning Center here in town. So, community members have reached out, such as Carrie Heimerman and 309, and have helped support our trip to nationals. And we are asking for the city's help as well. So, thank you. Thank you, guys, for your time today.
Thanks for coming in.
So to be clear, you're asking for, um, contribution of $1,500, correct?
Any contribution will help. $1,500 is what is left in our trip. I apologize for not making that clear.
Okay.
Um, thank you so much for asking that question.
Okay.
Council?
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to offer $2,000 to the students, uh, to help fund their, um, um, to fund their trip to nationals.
Second that. All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, provide a $2,000 sponsorship to the Halsted FBLA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Carries two to one. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public forum at this point and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after having reviewed the consent agenda as submitted, I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Carries, uh, no public hearing this evening, so we'll go on to unfinished business, and we have one item. And it's the code enforcement contract. Did you have updates for us that, on that, Ethan?
Um, we've spoken, I believe, uh, city attorney Jance is still going through that. As he noted, he was out since our last meeting. Um, but after discussions in the work session, it sounded like you all, um, general consensus was to move forward, uh, with professional code compliance to, uh, take that into consideration, so, um, I guess authorizing that contract subject to, uh, the final revisions by the city attorney, um, and authorizing the mayor to sign would be in order, and then, um, we also need to look, uh, because we'll have some corresponding updates to our sections of code enforcement um, that we'll need to put into place, uh, with this going out to being a contracted service. Um, so what we're looking for, you all essentially is on, um, the biggest thing would be in the event, you know, appeals, do you want that to go, come before you all as a body for appeals? Or do you want that to go to municipal court for appeals?
Municipal court, yeah.
I guess we'll need to change that, um...
Let Brad deal with it.
It just adds another step if it comes to us.
Yeah.
I would assume for distressed properties, do you still want that to come to the governing body first? Okay. So those were the only other two things we need just to do. The, uh, the back-end side on ours to bring those ordinances to update code as applicable, but the current contract, and we'll keep the same stipulations as far as, you know, termination windows and all that, won't change, um, or the price point. Uh, I think most of the additions that Brad and I have discussed, uh, just result, or, are in the line of, uh, the contractor having appropriate insurance and carrying that to protect the city.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the contract with professional code and compliance for code enforcement services subject to final revisions and approval by a city attorney and authorization for the mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the contract from professional compliance for our code enforcement here in town. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and that carries. Did you need a secondary motion for...
No, the general consensus on that was fine.
So we can move on to new business. Uh, first item under new business is dragon grant application reviews. You're gonna let us know who's here for dragon grants, Ethan?
Uh, we had two applications, one from Metal Transformations, and then the other from Making Memories China Rental. Um, I believe Making Memories is here. Um, so I will gladly allow them to come up and talk about their project, um, if they would like to do so.
Hello. I'm Marsha Mueller. Do I need the address and everything as well?
Sure. Uh, you can give us the address of your business.
Okay, that's 243 Main. Um, I know the last time we were here and applied and were awarded, it was all about fixing the structural needs in that building. Um, now we're trying to get it from structurally to functional. Um, we have, you know, some plumbing, some electrical done, like there's no line even to the building yet for electrical. So we have a lot of work still ahead of us, and if anyone's been in that building prior to us purchasing, it's, it's a lot. So we have been working really hard. We still have some insulation, some HVAC, um, finish up the plumbing and the electrical, um, as well as like the front windows, those pieces that are still in need. Um, we've done a lot of work so far. We have, I know, one bid, I believe that we did, we, we didn't get the others in, in time, so I apologize for that. Um, yeah, so we are just here. We were super grateful the first time and asking for a little more assistance, as everything takes a lot more money and a lot more time than we had hoped. Any questions?
Uh, once you, once you get this...
Uh, once you, once you get this work done, how far out would you be before you can actually open the doors?
Great question.
You still have another round of other repairs after, after this one?
I'm really hoping that once we get through this, like the HVAC, the insulation, like those pieces, that we can then, like, put those finishing touches on and finally open those doors.
So this is really close to putting you over the finish line then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So this gets you there?
It's super close. And I know we've had several people that we, since we're in that kind of wedding business, we've had quite a few that have asked us about even renting the space. Like when it's done for like cake cutting decorating, or cake cutting, cake decorating classes, like those kinds of things. We're like, we're not there yet, but we are hopeful that we can bring some other people in town as well. Um, once we get the place open.
Not to hold you to anything, were you still looking six, eight, nine months out maybe?
I would say. Yeah, that's our hope. Yes, we've been pushing, trying. But it, like I said, it's, it's been a huge undertaking as that building was in very bad disrepair. When we purchased, so.
Well, once anybody's got any other questions, Mr. Mayor, I would, here you are. You've got two of, okay, here you are. Uh, motion to, uh, vary from the established one-year waiting period. No, that's a different one. Is that, Ethan, is that a different motion aside from granting the ten thousand?
No, it's just part of it, um, I will note. Uh, Making Memories submitted an application at the end of twenty twenty-three, and we're technically awarded twenty twenty-four. And our guidelines, um, typically ask for a one-year waiting period. However, we, these are the only two applications we've received. And they're moving their project right along, and so we told them we would forward it to all of you to suspend that particular policy provision if you so choose.
Since they're moving right, okay, good, good, okay. Uh, motion to vary from the established one-year waiting period requirement per dragon grant program guidelines and approve a dragon grant in the amount of ten thousand to Making Memories China Rental.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a dragon grant for ten thousand dollars to Making Memories. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. There you go, congratulations.
Good luck.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for saving one of our downtown buildings. I'll have sneak by and take a look. Do we have representation from Metal Transformations here?
I do not believe so. And that project was an expansion for that building.
So that's up to you, counsel, on that one.
And he's not, they're not here, why? They didn't, didn't just probably didn't think you needed to be here?
Yeah, I was saying, we didn't, we didn't specifically request, since there's an application process, so.
Now, is this the one that's on First Street? Okay.
Yep, it's within the area across from Halsted Tire.
Yes, yeah, okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, we're looking at, uh, bringing, um, business to town and making them successful. So I would make a motion to approve the dragon grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Metal Transformation subject to successful variance applications related to the project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to grant Metal Transformations a ten thousand dollar dragon grant, provided they can get through the variance process. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, that one's passed. Um, what's that do for our dragon grant budget for the rest of the year, Ethan?
Uh, we still would have thirty thousand of what was originally budgeted, and that should still more than cover what you all authorized as far as, uh, doing the match, uh, for the businesses that want to do the signs grant, so.
All right, next item under new business is the Wedgewood Shop Expansion. You want a dragon grant for the golf course, Sam? Not eligible.
Outside of the, outside of the, um, boundaries.
Uh, thank you for letting me come speak. Um, you know, since twenty twenty, we've seen a large increase in play. And before twenty twenty, we used to store our extra carts down in our south cart shed. Um, once, you know, that play started coming in, uh, we decided that we needed to have a faster time turnaround on our golf carts. So what we did was we moved those thirteen carts up to what would be the maintenance shop. And, um, that cut down our time immensely. It takes roughly fifteen to twenty minutes now to pull all the carts out, get them ready. Before, when they're, when you have our clubhouse attendant walking down to the south cart shed, walk down, pick it up, drive back, and then at the end of the day, they gotta put them up. We're taking, it takes a little over two hours to do that. So that fifteen minutes really cut back into things that they could be doing around the clubhouse, cleaning stocking, um, getting things ready for the day. Um, with the carts being stored in the shop, there's always issues that come up. You know, the main two that we saw and that kind of slowed us down in progressing during the day is we're not able to store our equipment in that shop. So it's scattered throughout our south cart shed, or south sheds, um, which also, uh, house, uh, member carts. Um, so we were taking bays away from them that were not being used at that time, uh, to store our equipment. Um, and the second thing, um, one of the biggest things is we don't have a true place to work on equipment when all that stuff was in there. So to be able to work on equipment, we were having to remove everything that's in the shop, move our tools around, get everything resituated, then start. Again, that could take anywhere from twenty to thirty to sometimes forty minutes, depending on what we need to do, what piece of equipment we're using. So, um, kind of thinking what we could do and how we can do it. We don't have a lot of land out there where we could actually put something, everything, you know, we're on forty-two acres, kind of a small piece of land for a golf course. Uh, so our best bet was to, uh, put that connected to the current cart shed that's there, which houses twelve carts, and expand it eighteen feet and go the distance, which is fifty-two feet. This, like I said, this will also butt up to the shop. So in that map that you should have, um, it's kind of drawn there with a line. The new cart door, or new garage door will be on the west side. Uh, we'll have a walk-in door on the south side. Um, in this proposal as well, they would be replacing all the metal on the west side of the current cart shed and replacing that garage door as well. What, there are, in the proposal too, they are also gonna level the floor and then put gravel on, which is exactly what we have in our other cart shed. So, there's nothing that really changes between those. But the cool thing about this shed is it can house eighteen to twenty-four carts. So, you know, if we ever did get more carts, or, you know, if we needed that extra storage, we have it with this new shed. And it also gives us the opportunity to store all of our maintenance equipment for the carts. So all the filters, all the seat covers, seats, rails, everything that we need that we, that's now in our shop, again, taking up the space that I don't really have already.
You gonna have enough room with the attic space to build a little mezzanine for storage up there?
No. Nope, there won't be enough room for that. Um, just with how they had to pitch the roof coming off, uh, it's, it'll, it'll be enough to fit a golf cart in. Plus a little extra. But, uh, do you have any questions concerning the shed, the carts that we have?
So the, the, the addition will hold an additional eighteen to twenty-four. So that, for a total of thirty-six, correct? Okay.
Now, if we're at that twenty-four carts, we don't have the storage anymore. Um, you know, I've always thought the perfect number for our golf course is thirty carts. So, you know, if we ever got up to that thirty, we would still have that storage in that room, um.
You're still seeing a lot of play come from around, come from distances?
Yes.
A lot of distance?
Lots.
What tournaments have you had this year? Like high school or anything like?
We've, yeah, we've had two high school tournaments. We just had a, uh, uh, family get-together tournament. And I think there's fifty-something players in that one, which will be the smallest tournament we do all year.
So the fifty is the smallest one?
Yeah. You know, when I first got here, it was, if we got forty players, it was great. You know, we're hosting one on June seventh. Um, that has a hundred and twenty players in it. So, um, it's, golf has really grown, um, you know, since I started working in this industry. Um, and I don't feel like it's on a downward fall at all.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more discussion or questions, I make a motion to approve the cart shed expansion project that would add eighteen fifty, by fifty-two addition to the south side of the existing cart shed and shop from Great Plains Roofing and remodeling with a price not to exceed forty-two thousand.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, Wedgewood Shop Expansion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign, that carries. All right, more work for, for you to do, Sam.
Hey, you wanna give a little speech about what's going on this weekend? Just real quick. At least I didn't wait till you got home.
Yeah, go ahead and give yourself a plug.
Yeah, so, uh, this Saturday is our fortieth anniversary at the golf course. And what we're doing is we're rolling back green fees to nineteen eighty-five. So I believe nine holes is four dollars and eighteen holes is six dollars and carts are six dollars for nine holes and eight dollars for eighteen, so like ten and thirteen or something. Uh, we're doing a free lunch, uh, from eleven to twelve-thirty or until the food runs out. And at twelve-thirty, we're gonna have a rededication of the golf course, uh, new logo reveal. And we could have some speakers coming to kind of give the history of the course from when it was sand greens to when it transferred into the grass greens. And then from my perspective, since I've been here and what we're gonna be doing or where our plan is the next five, ten years. So, but yeah, it's gonna be a fun time. We're gonna have lawn games, um, bring your family out. Um, bring picnic blankets, chairs. It's just really meant for the community. It's, um, kind of figure out a way to thank them, but also, you know, give the history of how this course has evolved over the last forty years.
Sam, it's just too bad you can't have Leo Young here. That name doesn't ring a bell probably.
Nope, I know, nope, it does. Yep.
And that's this Saturday, right?
That is this Saturday. We're starting tee times at seven forty-five and go until it gets dark.
Sounds good.
Yep, thank you.
Next item under new business is one that Ethan added. Uh, it's crack ceiling of our streets, and I believe we have a proposal in front of us, counsel. What are you wanting to do there, Ethan?
Yeah, um, basically, we would ask, um, we held off because we have the two major projects in Safe Routes to School and the North Street Project, um, in engaging like in a, larger project regarding ceiling, uh, but still keeping up on our maintenance and not falling behind or falling any more behind than we need to. Uh, speaking with Pat, figured that, um, crack ceiling, uh, would be a good use of, uh, funds this year for maintenance, uh, so we're asking to, you see the bid there, um, between six to ten pallets. Essentially, they'll, uh, go through the entire city, fill cracks that meet those criteria, uh, until they run out of material, essentially. Pat can probably speak to the estimate and what he thought, but we figured this would make a pretty good dent around. Um, so we would just ask for approval of that quote from them, um, probably not to exceed forty-five thousand.
Pat, you have anything to say about, about this company? Uh, have we used them before? They're, they're the ones that usually we see.
Our patching and sear seal.
We gotta stay on those streets, safe where we have. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the contract, um, for the, want to do the ten pallets, uh, not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars for, uh, crack and seal, ceiling, with South Central Ceiling and paving.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve this proposal for crack ceiling. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign, that carries. Next item under new business is a request coming from the Planning and Zoning Board.
Yeah, the Planning Commission had their meeting. And, uh, they feel that they're kind of nearing the end of, uh, their work on those draft regulations, um, but are asking, uh, essentially for the governing body to approve, uh, third-party review of what they come up with, uh, just to show you where they're currently at. Um, these are also available on the website. Uh, we sent all of you, uh, the current up-to-date draft regulations, which incorporated the comments, uh, from their latest meeting. However, the Planning Commission has no independent budget authority, uh, and this most likely third-party review, you know, is going to be, I would imagine, you know, a couple thousand minimum, um, if not more, just for the legal and technical side. So, uh, approaching you all to get a consensus, uh, that way I can move forward with trying to identify and, and bring proposals back to you all, uh, to approve.
We're gonna be looking at, uh, professional, uh, services, uh, in this field also. Legal, I would imagine attorneys are gonna look at this also to make sure that. So I would imagine we're probably gonna be looking well at six to eight maybe?
Probably.
And that's what this is, is a legal review of the language in the, uh, regulations, right?
Yeah, we're trying to do legal and technical.
Pretty much need to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd agree.
Yeah.
So, I would say go get a semestra and we're planning on doing it.
We will do so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us, uh, out of new business to executive sessions. We do have one executive session tonight. And Charlie, you get the honor since Jim's not here tonight.
I've got a mic on, okay. I move the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending contract negotiations, consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception of Kansas Statute A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two. And ask that the addition of the governing body and the persons, following persons join the governing body executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. The opening meeting and the governing body will reconvene the city council met chambers at eight oh five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. We'll move to the back room, counsel. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, I'm gonna move on to the report section of the agenda. We got governing body comments, but I'm gonna start first, uh, because I have a proclamation for Wedgewood Golf Course in honor of, uh, celebrating its forty-year anniversary that'll happen this Saturday that Sam had alluded to earlier. And whereas for four decades, Wedgewood Golf Course has offered a welcoming and challenging golfing experience with its thoughtfully designed nine-hole layout serving as a cornerstone for recreational play, youth development, and local tournaments. And whereas Wedgewood has not only provided an ideal setting for learning and loving the game of golf, but has also served as a cherished gathering place for families, friends, and neighbors. And whereas the continued success of Wedgewood Golf Course is a testament to the dedicated staff, loyal patrons, and supportive community who have nurtured its legacy since the very first tee-off in 1985. And whereas the spirit of Wedgewood lives not only in the game, but in the relationships and traditions that have grown alongside each fairway and green. Now therefore, I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Hallstead, Kansas, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 40th anniversary of Wedgewood Golf Course and extend our deepest appreciation to all who have contributed to its enduring presence and purpose. Be it further resolved that May 31, 2025 be proclaimed as Wedgewood Golf Course 40th Anniversary Day in honor of this exceptional milestone and the lasting impact of this beloved nine-hole course. Let this proclamation serve as a celebration of the past 40 years and a bright outlook for many more to come. In witness whereof, this proclamation is signed and sealed on this 27th day of May 2025. So yeah, we're looking forward to that Saturday. It should be fun. I hope it don't rain. Haven't looked at the weather. Sam's shaking his head no. So we'll move on to the governing body. Start with you tonight, Denise.
Okay. Well, congratulations to the Hallstead Women's Softball Team. It's been, it was a great season. Broke my heart that you didn't make it out, but that's nonetheless nothing to be ashamed of. Fantastic season. And then congratulations to the Hallstead High School Choir that performed at Carnegie Hall. I didn't realize that it had been like almost 15 years or more. The last time they went was when my youngest daughter was in high school and went. So that's a huge accomplishment and they should be home or on their way home now. So thank you for promoting Hallstead and putting us in a good light. That's, that's an awesome experience to be able to stand on that stage and sing.
Sounds good. George?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Charlie?
I'll pass. I'll echo what Denise said. I didn't get to listen to the choir at Carnegie Hall. Saw pictures of them there and little run apart, but that's, that's a really neat experience for those kids.
Yeah, it is. I'm excited to hear their stories when they come home.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to Ethan for your city manager report.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council. I had the opportunity to attend the regional meetings put on by the Kansas Municipal Gas Agency who helps handle our city's gas acquisition. KMG is continuing the relationship with Wood River Energy regarding supply, which has helped isolate us from winter storm spikes these past two winter seasons. And staff will be talking with KMG regarding the city's purchase strategy for the upcoming season. KMG is also enhancing member services such as offering discounted rate studies and working on communication update strategies during those winter events. So just, it was a good meeting and glad to hear KMG is looking at those things. City is down to one easement agreement to finish out the necessary agreements for our Safe Routes to School project. We hope to have that agreement finalized by the end of this week and this project can finally move forward to the next phase. Stakeholder meeting regarding the North Street Rehabilitation and Sidewalk Project will be held this Thursday at 5:30 PM here at City Hall. Project engineer will be here to present preliminary plans for that project and then answer questions from the stakeholders. It is open to the public as well. Project to switch the city to a virtual cloud-based server still ongoing. Our managed IT company and municipal software vendor are currently working on setting up the test environments to ensure appropriate functionality between the server and our software before officially making the switch. Pool opening unfortunately was delayed due to weather and both the water and ambient temperature of the air. Staff will continue to monitor the situation and will work on getting the pool open as soon as it's reasonable to do so. This year, we'll also see new technology at the pool in terms of a point-of-sale system and the city is also updating the security camera system to bring it onboard with the system utilized at our other city facilities. City of Hallstead did apply for a mural grant from the Kansas Department of Commerce and is waiting to hear back on that application. I just want to thank Julie for her efforts in getting that application done and submitted and thank Dr. Ward for agreeing to the use of his north wall as the potential mural site if the grant's awarded. Staff are working on getting information to put in for the signs grant to benefit those interested downtown businesses. I believe at this point, we have at least the three businesses that we need to submit an application, so they're working on getting their estimates and we will build an application and submit that once we get that done. And then two upcoming events, one that's been mentioned many times this evening. Wedgewood's 40th Anniversary Celebration is on Saturday with activities for the whole family in addition to 1985 prices for those who golf. And then United Way of Harvey, Harvey and Marion Counties is hosting their annual Serve Day on Saturday, June 7. And this year, there is a Serve Day project that's in Hallstead at the Hallstead Housing Authority and volunteers or people who would like to volunteer can find details or the link to sign up for that opportunity via the city's Facebook page or the United Way's Facebook page. So very happy to see a project in Hallstead this year for that.
Ethan, regarding the security system at the pool, is that exterior or exterior and interior?
Exterior and interior.
Oh, good. Okay.
But not in obviously any restricted.
Right, right. Yeah.
Area.
Public areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anybody have any questions of Ethan's report? If not, that concludes our agenda and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If the same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, Council.